And time to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. It's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for March 20th, 2018. We'll begin this meeting as we do each meeting. The pledge this evening will be led by Councilwoman Love and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Mayberry if he would offer our prayer this evening. Thank you. You'll stand with me, please.
Shall we pray? Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we pause in our fellowship, give you the honor and the praise and the glory for being our God and our Father. We thank thee heavenly Father for the change of the season. We thank thee heavenly Father for life and the many blessings that you give each and every one of us. We thank thee for the blessings of our families, our community, heavenly Father, our state, and certainly heavenly Father bless our nation and may all leaders serve thee for wisdom and guidance. As we heavenly Father contemplate and discuss the items that are on the agenda tonight, we ask the heavenly Father to impart your wisdom to each and every one of us. All these things we ask and pray in the blessed name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Ms. Ketchel to call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Overton?
Present.
Mr. Alexander is not here yet. Uh, Mr. Camp?
Present.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Love?
Here.
And Mr. Mayberry?
Over here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of minutes from January 2nd, 2018. They are before you. Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Additions, corrections? Seeing all, uh, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 2nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, they, um, they pass unanimously. Next item is public recognition on agenda-related items. Anything that's on the agenda tonight, if you're in the audience and you have interest on it, now would be your time to come forward and speak to that. We would invite you to do so. Introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and we will allow you to speak. There is time at the end of the meeting for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So if you have something not on the agenda, at the end of the evening would be your time. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kim Baker, 322 Center Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'm also here as a private, um, citizen and just kind of, um, of interest of a couple of things on the agenda tonight. Um, one being the music festival that I think y'all discussed last week and are going to have more discussion on this evening. Um, I wanted to talk first, as a private citizen and someone who's been a longtime festival goer, I have traveled all over for music festivals, outside of our city, outside of our state. And I think we've come to a point where we realize the demand exists. The demand exists, uh, for private residents and as a community leader, as a CEO of the chamber, I've realized that the demand exists for folks that are here, for our businesses, and then also for tourism, tourism, for the tourism aspect of it. Um, we know that folks travel all over, so why not Gallatin? We're centrally located. We have a location that I think the mayor and some others will probably discuss at some point that is, that showcases a number of our assets. Um, we know that we're fully capable, after the big eclipse event that y'all might remember that happened in 2017. We know that we had the international spotlight and folks came here, they saw Gallatin, they loved it, and they left wanting more. We are the nicest place in America, so I think it's time we showcase that and continue to recruit people to come here. Um, the festival, if it moves forward, which I ask your support for it too, will offer residents an opportunity to spend more dollars here and enjoy entertainment here and at the city limits, but it'll also attract visitors from outside our area. Wanted to talk a little bit about the economic impact of visitors to our area. We know from the State Department of Tourism that visitors, when they come somewhere, they spend on average of $116, um, a day. That's one visitor. We know that a conservative estimate on 3,500 visitors, which would be the low end of this music festival, should it happen, would bring in around $406,000 to Gallatin and the area, or surrounding area. They'll stay in our hotels, they'll diner our restaurants, they'll shop our retail stores, and they'll do far more than that. Um, this event, um, has been going on, conversations have been going on between partners like the city of Gallatin, a number of departments within the city, the chamber, tourism, and then of course, private, um, businesses that have been involved. Since the, you might have seen that the media shared some stories last week, um, and, which I'm going to talk about those in a second, but since we've had those, I know myself and Jeff, um, Henshaw in the mayor's office have had a number of calls, inquiries, visits, people ready to put up sponsorships like Newton Nissan, Gap, a number of other local businesses that are ready to invest dollars in a festival like this in Gallatin, Tennessee. We have also had artists from in the area and outside the area, big artists, that are interested in being involved in the festival. Um, I wanted to give you all a couple, a couple of numbers, um, the combined efforts of some of our local media partners. The articles that went live at the end of last week and over the weekend have had almost a thousand shares, um, on social media, and they've reached almost 60,000. And then the comments, um, that are on those, if you haven't had an opportunity, have been primarily positive. People are ready for this. And as a private citizen and also the leader of our chamber, I'd ask that you support this decision to bring a music festival to Gallatin, Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And that brings us to mayor's comments. I just have a couple. Want to mention that, um, our friend Jeff Henshaw's birthday is tomorrow. It's a significant one. He wants no fanfare, but I couldn't resist. Councilwoman Linda Love's birthday and Councilman Steve Camp's birthday both fall this Friday, so wish them a happy birthday. Want to give a shout out to the Gallatin Fire Department. They did a tremendous job with their tournament last weekend benefiting the Bradford family. It was great fun and brought people from all over the county together. And, um, I guess we can all be thankful that we didn't get bad weather yesterday. With that, I'll conclude. Mayor's comments moving to the regular agenda. The first item is a show cause hearing on 331 Magnolia Street. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chuck Stewart, our building official, and Susan High McCollie, our city attorney.
Evening, council. Just a little bit back on this, uh, this 331 Magnolia Street, uh, we've gone through the entire process a little 30 days ago. Uh, you, uh, approved the dangerous building status and the, the letters were sent out and the show cause hearing was, was set up for tonight. And, uh, Mr. Nathan Harsh, who is the, uh, I believe the trustee of this building, he's here tonight.
Mr. Stewart, before Mr. Harsh comes up, will you just apprise council of some of the issues with this, um, building as to why you have deemed it unfit and dangerous?
This, this building has reached the deterioration point that it's not rebuildable. It is, uh, it, building had to be started completely over again. It's, uh, the floors have fallen through it. It's just reached that point of decay and, uh, that the building is no longer, uh, suitable to be, uh, refurbished and brought back.
And I would, um, point all of council members to the complaint that is in your packet. It gives some detailed, um, information as to the things that are some of the problems at this home. Yes, Mr. Overton?
Turn this on. Clarifies a dangerous building, uh, at the structure at the address listed above, to be unfit for human occupation or for the use of the following reasons. Structure is unsafe, deteriorating accessory structure, insufficient egress, garbage and rubbish accumulation, damaged emission roof shingles and damaged sofas. The building officials has determined that this house should be demolished.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love to declare this house a dangerous building and to move forward with action. Yes, Mr. Harsh, did you want to make any comment to council?
Well, I just agree.
Mr. Harsh, if you'd come to the podium, please.
We've been trying to get the city to demolish this building for quite some time now, going through this process. We represented the estate of Ms. Annie Malone. She died a number of years ago. She had about four or so heirs. They were scattered up north. We tried to reach them and then we couldn't get them to, uh, sell this property. We couldn't get a good deed for many of them. They've died. They're up teenagers. I don't know how many. I would say probably as many as 50 to maybe 150 people that have been died out of this and born into it in their last 15 to 20 years. And it is very unsafe, that building. It's just an eyesore and it's, and there's some nice buildings on that street. You have a church at the end of it. You have a restaurant there. And it is long overdue to tear this building down. And we've got a little money from the lady that used to live there, a little rent left, and we will tell us what it costs to tear it down and we'll pay as far as we can with that money to reimburse the city for it. And I agree, it should be going down in the sooner of that.
Thank you. Thank you. So there's been a, a motion and a second, and as you're aware, due to our ordinance and our statute, you will have to issue an order with findings of fact. Um, if you want to just accept all of the statements that have been presented tonight, in addition to the complaint that is on file and all the other documents, we can move forward after you vote, uh, getting an order, um, and so we can get this moving to get this house demolished. We can move forward immediately after the vote? No, we have to wait. We have to, we have to do an order and follow our process. Very good. Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 01802-13, and for that, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning a 12.24 plus or minus acre portion of a parcel from A Agriculture Residential District to MRO Multiple Residential and Office District in approving a preliminary master development plan for Tompkins Farm Subdivision located off east of Old Scottsville Pike and west of Airport Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this, uh, but however, I know Bill asked you about a month ago, uh, if I could get, you know, how the utilities are on that old road. Uh, I, I asked David about it, so I know there, I can remember when that was, the state highway before the other new one was, was built and we traveled on that. I just like to go on record in the minutes that the city has no plans on widening that road nor the bri, nor the bridge that's between the country club and the entrance to this, uh, uh, to this development. Cause there, there's basically two bridges. There's one that's right below where the swimming pool is down there by the country club. It's pretty narrow. And then the one over there, but where Connie grew up over there on that one, I think that one is going to be widened. So that people, as they buy into that subdivision, and I believe it'd be successful, that as that road becomes narrower and narrower due to the additional traffic that'll be on it, that we can reflect back to our minutes that we do not have plans to, for the city to widen that road nor the, nor the bridge. That's all I have to say.
Okay, what, what was your question for Mr. McCord?
No question. I just, I was making a statement. That's all.
Anyone else?
For the record. Uh, those utilities are right beside that road, aren't they? So it'd be pretty impractical and economically not feasible to move them to widen that road, I would assume.
Right, at the, uh, Bill McCord, city planner, at the last council meeting, uh, there were a couple of questions and pertaining to, uh, alternative zonings than the one requested, the MRO requested. We, uh, have a chart there. Each of you have a chart in front of you, which indicates the location of those public utilities in relation to this property. And it also identifies all of the other types of uses that would allow for single-family homes to be similar to what the product they're providing and, uh, what other uses are allowed in that zoning district and the minimum lot sizes and lot widths that are associated with each of those zones. So that's, uh, at y'all's request. Glad to answer additional questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Any questions for Mr. McCord?
No. Connie, if you could just put that in the, in the record. So if a year from now, those people come up here and say that we need to widen the road, we have documentation that upon consideration that the city has no plans to do so. It is at its expense, nor the bridge. So buyer beware. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion, any questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is second reading on ordinance 01802-13. With all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Item three is second reading on ordinance 01803-15. Councilman Camp?
Thank you, mayor. This is ordinance appropriating $1,886,500 for an ITS CNA grant. So moved.
I'm sorry, we have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01803-15. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Item four, second reading on ordinance 01803-16. Councilman Alexander?
Thank you, mayor. This is the ordinance appropriating $1,000,000 from donation received, uh, in public or relation account, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01803-16. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 01803-17, and Councilman Mayberry is recognized.
Okay, thanks, Paige. This is an ordinance appropriating $980,000 for the Nashville Pike Sidewalk Grant. Let me read this one. Whereas the city of Gallatin has applied for and we were awarded the Nashville Pike Sidewalk Grant, the project will cost $980,000 and will be an 80/20 grant using 80% federal CMAC dollars and 20% city dollars, which is 196,000 on our part, which we already have budgeted. It's not new money out of the general fund. Thank the Lord. And whereas 500,000 is already appropriated for sidewalks in account number 11041670-931-186 sidewalk grant. Now be it ordained by the city of Gallatin that the sum of $480,000 is hereby appropriated to account number 11041670-931-186 sidewalk grant. And be it further ordained that $784,000 is appropriated to revenue account number 11033490-186 of state grants. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 01803-17. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item six is first reading on the ordinance 01803-18, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Paige. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning two parcels comprising 7.01 plus or minus acres from A Agriculture Residential District to the R15 Medium Density Residential District located on the south side of East Broadway and west of Martin Lane, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 01803-18. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item seven is first reading on ordinance 01803-19. Councilman Hayes?
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for the Knoll at Fairview consisting of 211 attached dwelling units for areas one and two of parcel B of Greensboro Village Plan Unit Development, authorizing the PMDP to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01803-19. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item eight is first reading on ordinance 01803-20. Vice Mayor Overton?
Thank you, mayor. This is ordinance approving a waiver of fire suppression system tap fees and to make sidewalk and road repairs for commercial buildings more than 50 years old that are installed in the fire suppression systems. I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
I, I missed last two. Just clarification. This is not just restricted to the downtown historic. We're making it all over town for every building that's 50. And then each year, as a building becomes 50 years old, henceforth would just be added to that, to that number, right? It's not just for the downtown district, correct?
We discussed last week, and I think this is true. We don't foresee, um, it, it really affecting that many buildings because typically they're going to be two stories and typically they're going to want to have some kind of upstairs use and so.
I think it's especially good for the downtown.
It's very, very good for downtown, but we were also thinking about like Depot, you know, that would potentially be a building that would benefit by being sprinkled, so.
When you got, as old as, you got a lot of, like, RCO ones, you mean, you go on and on and on for those. But it's a good benefit. To save a life, it's worth it. Thank you, David, for giving these fees.
Any further discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01803-20. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item nine is first reading on ordinance 01803-22, and Councilman Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $50,000 for Gallatin Music Festival, and I so move.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hayes?
And I know we've already come up with a location, but I just, I want to make sure that the traffic and everything is going to be handled for that location and that we've done our research. We've gotten with the police chief, everybody else, just to make sure. Cause that, you know, Lock 4 Road is not the best road to handle
Yeah.
thousands of people to go down and come out, especially at night, so.
We understand and, and not every, not every detail is in place yet, as you can imagine. I mean, this is the first step. But, um, a couple of points that I'll make to that. That wasn't even a location that we were considering until we learned that the Exterra had actually had a similar attendance. And that was managed just fine, and it's actually a shorter time span than what we're looking at for the festival, which I guess for the festival that we're going to, it's a nine-hour festival versus a five or six-hour event. So that made us think, oh, we could do it there. And then we evaluated the parking availability, and not all parking can happen onsite. Some of it will be offsite and alternative site. But, um, unlike the eclipse or unlike the Fourth of July, we happen to know exactly how many people will be in attendance and how many cars, because we're going to require them to purchase parking and tickets in advance. And so they will know where they're parking, they will know how to get there, and we will, we have talked to a company this week who are professionals that actually hire like, um, handle parking for the big events in Nashville. And they, um, we're talking with them about possibly handling our parking for us. So that we do it, we do it well. We don't, we need, you know, we're, there's so many things that we have to be, have to be worked out. You know, we have to notify the residents in south that area. We have to let them know that this is going to be a terrible traffic day for them. We have to make sure that we have emergency access. We have to, you know, make sure that parking is orderly. Um, the nice thing about the span of the event is there are people that will come and stay all day, but they're not all going to come at once, not all going to leave at once. Because there's going to be different music throughout the event.
It could possibly be a great venue, you know, with the lake there and everything like that. So, yeah, it could be, so, okay.
Paige, what about, I'm sorry, Councilman Overton?
Mayor, if we could, and you know, I'm all for a festival. I've got, I, I live on Lock 4, of course, and, and it's in my district. And I have gotten several calls in the last couple of days since the ad come out in the paper that I was hoping it wouldn't come out in the paper, but it did. So I've gotten several calls and, and some of them are really, really concerned. And, you know, I've tried to tell them that we, we will, you know, have some communications, and I'm not sure this is the best venue to have it at, at the end of Lock 4. I don't know that, but I'm like Councilman Hayes. I want to be sure that we do our homework, if this is where we decided we're going to have it, and that the, the police, the fire, the ambulance, everybody meets and be sure we're okay. You know, I can just see this road backing up to Nichols Lane and us trying to get a fire truck and ambulance out there, because it won't happen. If it does.
We would keep one lane open.
So, I, I just, you know, I'm just apprehensive and I'm all for a festival. I think it'll be a wonderful thing for Gallatin. But I just want to be sure that we're having it in the right place. And, and I would just ask that we put this maybe on the committee next, well, I'm not going to be here next week, but it still needs to be on the committee so we can have some discussion on it. Uh, I'm going to be out of town next week, but, but it does need some more discussion on it before we vote for it.
That is fine, and we will have some more details by next week.
Um, what we're trying to move forward with the, um, allocation of funds is so that we can actually go ahead and secure artists
because they do require, um, a deposit, if you will. But, um, if we could put on the work session next week and then you would still have second reading to make a final determination, and then we will.
And I'm good with doing that. I mean, we could have the artists no matter where we have it at, whether we have it there somewhere else, so.
We could. Uh, you know, in the, in this group of people that have been working on this, it was the appeal of being on the lake in that setting that was just like the wow factor that everyone was so excited about. It is a beautiful setting and have the opportunity to showcase that would be.
And I had a lot of people that asked me would alcohol be there? And I said, I'm sure it will be if you're going to have a music festival. I'm sure it's going to be there.
Our, our intention is to have alcohol available, um, just for the, this, for everyone's information. Um, we've talked to the Army Corps of Engineers a couple of times, talked to them today. Um, the director of the real estate division told me he was thrilled about this, that he would be attending it because he was so excited and thought it was such a good use of that property.
And we will limit it to so many people.
3,500 is our working number.
And that's all we're going to let in there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if somebody walks up to the gate and it's sold out and?
It is going to be, it is going to be just like you go into a concert. If you don't have a ticket and you can't buy one from somebody that already has one, you can't be there.
Unless you're by lake.
Unless you're on the lake.
I think we'll have a huge turnout with the lake.
And they can watch from the lake.
Anyway, I appreciate it. I just want to be sure we're doing our homework.
Oh, I, us too. I mean, it, we've worked a long time before getting this far, so I, I agree entirely and.
I live out there and I'm going to have to listen to it before and after.
Oh, I know, I know. But interestingly, we've had some calls in our office and, um, I remember one gentleman that called really, really angry that wound up offering suggestions and being excited about it by the time he hung up. So unfortunately, anything new is always scary, but I think the city of Gallatin has great experience, not just from the eclipse last year. And remember, we had no idea how many to expect for that. Um, we've done the Fourth of July for so long. And so I think that we can do this and do it well and make a wonderful experience that will draw people to our city.
And the only difference in those events is you have multiple ways to get out of somewhere. We're here, you have no other way to get out. You have one way in and one way out, and that's it.
You do have Peach Valley.
How you going to get to Peach Valley from, from Lock 4 though? I mean, when you're out there at the end, you're not going, you got to come back Lock 4 to get to Peach Valley.
Right.
So. So, anyway, I just, I'm okay. I'm, I'm all for a festival. I just want to be sure.
Paige, I did hear you was going to sing one song.
That would be bad information. I assure you.
I thought you was going to be one of the groups that they're singing.
No, 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 no. We want people to want to attend, and that would not be a draw.
Yeah, really.
Thanks. I am getting a hula hoop with fire though, for the event.
What?
Fire on the water is the theme, and so they've got fire throwers and fire eaters, and I'm going to be a hula hoop, fire, a fire hula hoop.
I'm going to do a jet ski through the ramp and through a fire hoop.
All right, awesome.
So I take it won't be any kids there?
Um, kids are allowed at this point, yeah. No, we, um, I, I'm kind of viewing out of the cell of beer would be like Third Thursday on Main. So they would have to get, whoever our seller is would have to get a permit. We're, we have talked to the people in the, in Nashville, do Live on the Green, as the beer sellers, so that they're, it's their responsibility, they're licensed, they're professionals. They're, they deal with checking IDs and that kind of thing. It's not us, so.
Mayor, I would hope that we'll try to use some local people to do a lot of this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Cause, I mean, you know.
We would love to.
We need to.
We would love to.
If we can.
Certainly, um, local food trucks have shown, I mean, it, the interest in this has been so exciting. Uh, we, we have gotten more phone calls in this office about anything.
I'm going to start sending some of my phone calls to y'all, okay?
Send them to Jeff Henshaw. He, he has all the answers, so.
I'm, I'm, I want to say I'm excited about it too, and I think most people are really excited about it. Mostly what I'm concerned about and what they, what I've heard is, is like what Craig said, that Lock 4 Road, driving home in the dark is not always that easy to do. And if you've been out, if you've got a long line of cars and, I, I don't know, that's the only thing that I'm a little concerned about.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that concern.
But it's a great venue. It's, it's a great venue.
And that's the thing. The awesome, the awesome venue, and for festival goers, the experience is the venue as much as it is the music.
I'm not saying I don't want to have it there. I just want to make sure, because I mean, if we can work it out.
We take every precaution.
That'd be my first choice.
And, and I would really be, um, this being a one-day event is better than it being a multiple-day event. Because I would not want to inconvenience those people on Lock 4 Road for multiple days. So if we were to expand this in the future and go for more days, I think we would have to new location.
Paige, is it a one-day event or two?
One, one day. So. Mr. Mayberry?
I'm going to vote for it on first reading. Uh, as Jimmy knows bankers, we always like two ways out of the deal. Number one is that the project works and it works fine and you get your repayment through the normal process of what you're investing in. We're investing $100,000 out of the general fund, correct? 50 tonight, but the total investment is 100?
No, we, uh, we're asking for $50,000 to secure. We're asking for fifty thousand dollars to secure the contracts with artists. We will have ticket sales and sponsorships to, we will have recouped our money by the time the festival happens.
But I think when we got our budget, our investment is a hundred grand. The county's putting up twenty, correct? If I understood it right. So our investment is a hundred grand, according to the budget that you passed out a couple weeks ago, number one. I'm sure it'll be a success. The backup, number two, if it's not, and we do not recover our investment, then I assume the new hotel motel tax that I'm certainly in favor of, that new revenue will help replace, if there is a deficit in our investment in this thing, to back to the general fund.
That's where, and that's where this designated fifty thousand dollars that we're asking is the initial investment. And we do intend to use ticket sales and sponsor dollars to fund the rest of the cost.
But if there's a shortfall, I mean...
But the occupancy tax that is going through will go into the same account that this fifty thousand dollars is going into. I am hoping that we make more money than we are projecting and that we are able to designate that for parks, because that's all tied to tourism. And this can be our tourism account that we continue to grow and reinvest in attractions to our area.
My concern's that general fund. I want you, but however, we're putting up a hundred grand. We know that the primary source of repayment is through ticket sales and whatever else sold out there as a profit. But if, whether, if something were to happen and we don't recover that, but the hotel motel tax can come in when we implement it at some point in time.
And I think our estimate...
And that will help replace that general fund.
Our estimate at this point on that, and of course, it's going through the legislature now, may have gone today, actually, but I think our rough estimate, based on what we can get from information from Sumner County, not counting the new hotels projected, is a hundred and thirty thousand in there.
That's fantastic. Now, that money in our legislation, the way we, it goes to the general fund, correct?
No, it has to go for tourism. An occupancy tax has to go for tourism investment, which can be investments in things that bring people, marketing parks, that kind of thing.
I know one county is doing one, but theirs is first in the state. They wanted to go to the general fund. And I didn't know if ours, I couldn't recall if ours was strictly designated for that. Okay.
And this will be rain or shine?
Yes.
So what fund does this money go to?
This will go into the tourism fund.
But this money comes out of the general fund, because we don't have tourism. Yeah, so it will come out of the general fund. The money from the hotel motel goes into the hotel motel tax fund.
Goes into tourism fund, no, tourism fund as well. But what we can do is we, as we reap the profits from this event, it can go back to the general fund, the money that we raised from this the initial year. Cover our costs and then any...
It'll all go back to the general fund.
Any further discussion?
I can remember, I know David Brown does and Jimmy, I can remember back many years ago, Tommy Garrett always thought that that would be a good location for an amphitheater. Remember that? Years ago, twenty years ago, he was pushing for an amphitheater. Well, this would be the first test to see if something like that...
Awesome. Well, I appreciate your consideration of this. I think it's really exciting. Anything else? Okay. Motion and second. All in favor, please. First reading of ordinance 018-03-22. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda. It takes us now to other businesses. Is there any other business, Vice Mayor Overton?
Susan, do you know where we stand on our stuff from legislature, our bills from legislature that, so we can have our election this year?
I've had initial conversations with Senators Hale's office, and I know he's sponsoring it in the Senate and with the county, but I know that it's getting ready to go through.
It may have been today, because I saw a tweet from Senator Hale that said he was taking local bills through. And I had several calls last week about stuff, too. Anyone else with any other business? Now it's time for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. If you're here this evening and you have something that you'd like to speak to that wasn't on this evening's agenda, now would be your time to come forward. We welcome you to introduce yourself and give us your address, too, please.
My name is Joe LaBorde, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. And in listening to your discussion tonight, the first thing that popped in my mind about down Lock Four Road is the bridge. And that gives us, if we have a good deal down there, then that gives us more reason to fix the bridge down on Lock Four Road. Right, Jimmy? Okay. Now, the other thing is, we need to have some way of getting around out there so that also we can put in our walkway down there, too. All right? So that gives us another reason to do that. And we might be able to hustle it up and get it in, right? All right, all right. So there's your money down the road, Mr. Mayberry. Down the toilet, we got to have that fixed. Tonight I raised, because we're getting ready to have a wonderful opportunity for those politicians in our county and/or city to meet and greet with their constituents. This fine event would be sponsored by the Surtoma Club of Gallatin on the twenty-eighth of this month, I mean, next month, and in April. And in fact, Mr. Overton's already been hit up by one of our famous members, Mr. Bobby Martin, for his tickets. And we want everybody to come out and join with us over at the Ice House and see if we can have a little bit of sausage and a little pancake and a little politics.